And we have most of the council here. We excuse Councilman Allen tonight. He's got other things that he's involved with. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We've asked to begin, to have Councilman White give us an opening prayer. And then Lieutenant, you want to give us the latest in the pledge?
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here at this council meeting tonight and pray that thy guidance and direction will help us in our thoughts and actions. We're grateful to live in this great part of the state and grateful for those who serve to protect and keep us safe. We pray for those whose hearts are heavy at this time from loss and pray that it will be washed over and protected. We ask thee to bless us with the moisture we stand in need of and bless those areas that are suffering from fires and other natural disasters that they will be cared for. And so we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
condolences to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know there were two officers lost. Was it in Tremonton? Appreciate what Roosevelt PD did to, you know, send condolences to that, to that, those officers, their families, and also the police force. So I think that was very appropriate. And we appreciate all you do and hopefully you'll be kept safe. We do have our minutes from the last meeting, first of all. Any amendments or corrections to those?
Yeah, Councilman Barrett noticed I missed at nine G. You have a motion and second, but no, you didn't put who did on the page bench. Waterline, can you check that one to make sure it's correct, Ciara? No, I didn't. Was there anyone, anyone see anything else? How would we approve with those amendments?
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, I'm in favor. Any opposed? All right. The next item in our meeting is the public comment period. Anyone that is with us tonight can take up, that would like to take the opportunity to address that council can do so. We'll give you up to three minutes and it's fifteen minute period max. So are there any here tonight that would like to take that opportunity? Yes, please come and state your name for the record. How about a really, no, I'm just kidding, Tommy.
Tommy Olson. We stopped by probably four or five years ago and asked if we could get a WLOI painted on One Thousand West from Lagoon Street down to the, basically where Sean Denver lives. It's a city building right there. The southbound traffic drives in the northbound lane. And if you're going northbound, they hug that and then they give you one of these unless you go by because they think you're actually in their lane when you're actually, I'd have to be driving in a parking spot, so. I mean, even if it goes two hundred north down to basically four hundred south, but at least from Lagoon Street down to two hundred south, we'd appreciate that.
That's One Thousand West, right?
One Thousand West, across the, the basically Constitution Park.
Yeah.
And then there's, there's a whole bunch of parking there and the southbound traffic don't pay attention to the parking. So if you're in your lane, they just don't, they think you're driving in their lane, so.
Well, the parking's a mess too because they park out into the street there.
Yeah, well, one year they painted it diagonally this way instead of this way. And so if you park this way, you have to go through both ways of traffic to go south there.
We did that.
But anyway, if we could, I would really.
That was before my time, Tom.
I didn't say you did, I just didn't blame you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody from the road in progress there. Yeah, awesome. Anybody else? All right, seeing them, we'll move forward with the rest of our agenda. Basically, we just have quite a few acts and items, mostly smaller issues, smaller things. We'll start with nine eight, All Abilities Park Location Proposal, Ryan? Dustin? You were both there, one of you.
And don't all of you jump up at once.
I guess, or I can point where you're talking to, I can talk and you point.
I'll go point.
He's being shy because Dustin and his crews actually came up with this awesome idea that I, that we thought as a committee. So, so we met together on the All Abilities and everybody's familiar with the project now that we've discussed that. And the proposed location would be in the volleyball pit, just north of the playground right there.
Yeah, playground's right here. That's a volleyball pit.
And I believe they're just gonna give us a proposal and a design plan just for that location, just where the sand is.
Where the dirt area is at would be the All Abilities parameter and location.
Yeah, and we hadn't come out, we had a meeting there on site, looked it over. We decided that if we can match the old playground with the new one, kind of have it look like it's all one piece, right? And redo the surface below it. We'll have to come in from the north and do an ADA approach there and sidewalk and. Yeah, we get that all figured out. So anyway, from staff recommendation in the committee, that's where we're proposing it will go. But obviously, it's up to you, council, to decide where the All Abilities Park will go.
Will we have any upset volleyball players?
Well, I was gonna say.
Yeah, we've, we've actually thought of that. And you know, we can put it anywhere right here in the open area. I wondered about right here. I mean, we could go right here. Like, there's a lot of open areas. Maybe we want to put it more in trees where it's more shaded. But we definitely, just because we'll take it down, we'll move it somewhere else. Even if we just keep it grass.
Is there a lot of use there for that?
There is, yeah. It gets used quite a bit. But also another thing to point out, the reason to move the volleyball pit, it's gonna help prolong the surface of the pickleball court. Because as you know, we get a lot of wind. And so a lot of wind will blow that sand onto the pickleball court. So if we move it and we put a solid ADA-approved surface in there, there won't be any more sand. It's, it's a solid surface. So that'll help our pickleball court longevity as well. So I just think it makes sense there.
Yeah, one thing that came up too, and I'd be crying, you and I talked about it after the meeting, is the bathrooms and having an ADA path to the bathrooms. But also something came up is the bathrooms that are on the old city building that are basically condemned. I wonder if we'd looked at that, maybe not as part of this project, but just kind of get a cost on what it would take to resurrect those because to come south would be a much shorter, easier spot to go.
Those bathrooms are just right there, by the way.
Exactly. So if maybe just.
If it's just a one single-use ADA bathroom that we could put there.
Yeah, I would just wonder if we could get some type of a cost to resurrect one of those and be a little closer to get that, those ADA people there.
And we'll wait and get these costs together too, and the design of the layout and everything and have it, because we kind of need an O-N-A-Way for our sun razor and so we proceed forward.
So what do you need tonight from the council?
The biggest thing is if it's okay to tear up the volleyball.
With a plan, with a plan to relocate.
Yeah.
I think it's great. I would, I would say move forward. I think that's a great location because I like that it's next to the other playgrounds already, so.
So do we want to consider moving the course before we do it? So we don't, you know, that laps.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I think, I think with that though, you could have temporary stands, you know, that and set that up. So that's a pretty simple thing. It may not be exactly where it eventually would be, but.
How often is the all diamond painted?
This all diamond right here, that gets used quite a bit, especially for practice and a few scrimmage games. Now with our new sports complex, they don't play as many games on there, but it gets used nightly for practice, especially travel teams. They use it a lot.
I really like the idea of the All Abilities Park ground. I don't mind the location, but once again, we're at this park where we don't have a long-term plan. Putting more things in it, which is fine, but doesn't work with our long-term plan. I would be fine with going in and improving that, but I really think as a city, we need to look at a location south of town that we can start building a park, that we can add some of these things in that are, and not keep taking away from the green space that's left at this park. So I don't oppose it there. I think it's fine there. But if we're losing, then we're moving the volleyball courts and we're losing more green space and we're just, we just keep doing that to this park, so. I'm okay with it there, but I just think as a city, we really need to look at space south of town that we can start adding some of these things that, as a growing city, we need.
I agree with Councilman Goodrich some point, but I, I like the idea of helping preserve the pickleball courts because we put a lot of money into those and we're not taking any green space if we're just doing the volleyball, right?
Yeah, just the volleyball grounds.
So that doesn't take away from the green space, but I do agree we need to look at south as well.
And we can keep, we can keep the volleyball pit just grass. Maybe we just consider that.
Well, I would almost say put it at the end of the basketball, you know, just a little bit. Well, either there or to the west of it.
I was gonna ask you, Dustin, with that volleyball pit, do you get a lot of sand blowing from that?
Yeah.
So if you move it to the west a little more, you're gonna have that sand in the ADA or the All Abilities.
Oh. So it's probably better to just leave it grass if we can.
Yeah.
Just have.
We could do that. That would be easy. I think what Mayor and I discussed, Matt, obviously just grass. It's just a soft on the grass, so.
Yeah, and you can, I think, I prefer playing on the grass. And I know a lot of people do, just because you can play on your bare feet and not have to worry about, have some rough sand to get it heavy enough not to blow away. So.
Yeah, and that's another thing to point out. We're, we're gonna get rid of the wood chips. That also blows onto the pickleball court as well. But we're gonna do a foreign place surface to match the ADA playground as well. So it'll help us in the long run maintain those facilities there.
So Don, was that a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the location and move forward with the project.
Okay, any further discussion before we enter the next section? Seeing them, do we have a second with a motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any amendments?
Thanks.
Thank you. Drew, Inland Port Authority Resolution.
Mayor and council, we're excited to bring to you tonight our big friends from the Utah Inland Port Authority. It's a group with the state of Utah and Jenna Draper and company. The workers are here to present tonight what they're about. This is to help us with our Main Street revitalization program. So I'll turn the time over to whichever of us presents.
I'll start and move to Jenna. Mayor, council, thank you. It's a privilege to be with you tonight. It sounds like you have a resolution in hand, but it hasn't been reviewed through your city attorney, so we don't anticipate any action. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little, but please ask, ask questions. We have my brother addressing the involvement and then move on. I'm assuming this is a relatively new concept to the mayor and council right now.
The inland port is, the TIF, we've been working on this for quite a while, but TIFs are a little bit hard to get established, and so.
That was yesterday, Mayor. Today, we got you.
That's what we heard, so we're excited.
Who's my slide button person? Hit it. We're gonna find out together what's next. The Inland Port Authority was formed in 2018 by Legislative Act. It took us a little bit to get going when they designated sixteen thousand acres in the northwest quadrant of Salt Lake City with, depending on who you ask, very little input from the municipality. Salt Lake City was so happy about that that they sued us, then it took us three years to kind of get that figured out. We have passed judicial scrutiny. An issue, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm gonna do my best in my non-attorney language, was could the legislature create an entity that enjoys and operates? Some powers usually reserved for municipalities, but we're not, we're not a city. We're Title XI subdivision of the state. And we, we won that at both the district and the Utah Supreme Court levels. Two of the three counts were found in favor of the Port Authority and the third was rendered, moved by the creation of an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake City itself. We've sought to be a good partner with the city recognizing that that was a pretty rocky start. One of the changes, as we moved to a new board, to a new executive director, is that we are now required, before we create what's called a port project area, to have the consent of the land use authority of that area. So we cannot unilaterally come in and create a taxing district in your community and tell through a resolution, you invite us to come in. So that would be the purpose of this resolution, to, to create that. One more, cycle back, one more. We have now fourteen project, sorry, yeah, back, yep. We have fourteen project areas. This would be the fifteenth project area across the state. We kind of started creating in twenty-three along the I-15 corridor and with the hiring of Jenna Draper, who helps from the Metropolis of Monroe, Utah. We're, we're expanding a little bit into the eastern and central part of the state. Okay, next slide. We, we bring administrative bandwidth. The creation of, of project area comes with our expertise, expertise and a combined goal to, to develop with your community. As we talk about the TIF increment, our, our budget, we get about three million dollars every year in general fund, but we take a five percent administrative fee to, for the growth in those areas. And with that, we fund a, a, we have our marketing team, we have an environmental review team, we have communications. Ben Harts, our executive director, keeps his master's thesis on TIF financing. We, we bring some expertise and again, some administrative bandwidth. And you have your own associate vice president, a region that's dedicated to your area. I think he's closer than, than Salt Lake City and maybe a little more familiar with your values, which we'll be on the next slide. This is the model. The nice thing about the Inland Port Authority, a couple of nice things, is, and I'm stealing Jenna's language here, it's, it's like an RDA or a CRA, except you get to start at step five. The land use authority speaks on behalf of all the taxing entities. So there's no interlocal agreements with any of those downstream entities. You're deciding on every half. And then the amounts are statutory. If you want a port project area, then seventy-five percent of the tax increment, which our court calls a differential, is the exact same thing, comes to the Port Authority but must be reinvested in the community that it's taken from. It's not fungible. I can't take Roosevelt money to Salt Lake City, but I also can't bring Salt Lake City money into Roosevelt. So we take that top, top, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent increase returns to the taxing entities along with that base level. Our, our bread and butter, our preference is greenfield sites, which today are generating a dozen of dollars in, in property tax revenue and change that into a manufacturing facility that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Again, with that seventy-five percent being invested in infrastructure or an incentive to bring the right type of industries in for your community. Questions about this model? Twenty-five years, seventy-five, twenty-five split. Okay, that was way easier than it usually is. Next slide. There's a four-court process that starts with, with the land use authority with you, where a resolution is, is passed inviting us to come in. We work with the community, you're designated to draft what's called a planned budget. I don't want to call it a government document. The governance really happens through, through Utah Code. But an aligned vision statement to make sure that we're optimizing a project area in line with how you want it to, to build out. We'll draft that with you and then we adopt that with a two-board meeting cycle with the Inland Port Authority Board, one for just presentation and then a second we like to put out, give a brief summary and create that project area. And then we have twenty-five years, which is not quite accurate, but it's easier to say twenty-five years. We have the authority to trigger parcels individually. So we don't trigger the, the project area to function until construction completes on the build. What that means is you get the full twenty-five-year bonding capacity for infrastructure repayment or for an incentive to a company. One of the things you're hearing with RDA communities is they'll have an RDA that's kind of long in a tooth and they can only offer a four-year incentive for a company to come in. Everyone, you, if you want a company and you want us to chase them for you, they will get that full twenty-five-year incentive. It makes it a very competitive package. Questions here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, well, there's a couple of things. So we've been working with Cody Dieter to do the RDA in association with the TIF and, and create a, this redevelopment agency, which would then improve downtown Main Street. And so some of the, so we have some of this in place, which would kind of just a catalyst to get us moving forward. But then the other, the other thing is, you know, there's, the plan is, isn't as much of bringing new businesses, I mean, it could and it would, as fixing up old businesses, old buildings and things like that. So just want to make sure that this still applies with that type of a.
It certainly can. There are community, we have kind of guideline rules that we are really rigid on the last edge for a ton. And then we have the more rural communities that require maybe a little more of the odds to get, get what they need. This is very similar to what Edison and Ridgefield City. As, as we've looked at TIF use cases in other communities nationwide, it's not a new concept. Every, every state does this. Communities that have light and try to use that TIF to redevelop, struggle to build enough, enough revenue to make that happen. Communities that use revenue from bringing an industry to then help revitalize some of the amenities around town do very well.
Gotcha.
So the cash cow is bringing the industry in to help do that revitalization.
Do you work with GoYo or something like that?
GoYo leads Utah or amongst our, they're our big leads, but almost thirty percent of our project area wins are organic to the communities. And one of those we see, especially in the eastern portion of the state, is there are a lot of opportunities that were kind of there, but you lack the mechanism to seal the deal.
Right.
So most of our wins, we just passed the four and a half billion mark for capex committed to the project areas across the state. The biggest portion of that, that's not true anymore, FERC, about half of that is, is organic to the communities, but yes, responding on just under three hundred and ninety-eight are our buy requests for information about businesses wanting to locate or expand into Utah. And we're sitting just above thirty wins for our project areas. And most of that's in the last eighteen months.
One thing they'll assist us to is we do have eight hundred thousand, you know, kind of jumpstart, at least the process of getting that working. So as businesses do invest in their, their pizzards and their businesses and taxes do go up, then that, that again is a kind of a catalyst to get that, that money moving, so.
Yeah, wonderful, Mayor. We, we will look to accelerate that. Certainly, there's the small business loan portion of the government's economic opportunity. They can help with that at all, very low through no interest loans. For small businesses that do some of those accruals. And then again, let's chat, let's make some contacts to make that happen. And they prefer to use local lenders. That keeps those dollars flooding in their community. And they have the IC ensure them through medical programs. So there's no risk to those, to those local lenders. But again, our goal is to bring new dollars into the community.
Do you, do you do like a research study or come in and figure out what, what we need? Or do you just find business?
We find that subject matter experts are usually sitting on the dais for what you need. And regularly, people are telling you every meeting what it is you need. I, I think there's kind of some universals. It'd be really nice to have another fifty or seventy-five or a hundred jobs in a manufacturing facility that paid six figures and had good benefits. And folks could go home in time to go to soccer practice or, or dance lessons. I, I think it's kind of the same. Now, one of the things that we're gonna do, we're not here just because we're nice people, even though we really are, is we're going to seek to align those industries to a statewide logistics strategy. Our goal, our statutory mandate, is to facilitate the movement of goods in a way that's less impactful on, on the roadways of Utah. Certainly leveraging rail use is a big part of that, but air cargo is as well, even in the more rural parts of the state. So we're gonna trick you on the back end to say, oh, no, our businesses are gonna get better service, better delivery for cheaper prices in, in a more efficient way. That's, that's the mandate that we align to, is on that, on that logistics side. It'll happen behind the scenes without, hopefully without you knowing about that. Our businesses are just working off. That's our goal.
Is there infrastructure that, as you try to bring in, the business are gonna say, we need this or that? And then we would have to potentially come up with that or?
We haven't seen that in other areas. We have an authority infrastructure bank that was capitalized at sixty-five million dollars. In other communities down in Iron County, we've done loans to private entities, both Savage Rail and BCI Steel to open transload facilities, truck to rail, rail to truck. Those have been wildly successful, more than two thousand trucks off the road since they went in operation. And it was a loan from the Port Authority through Business Direct. We don't, we don't want to operate a logistics facility. There are lots of things the government is really, really good at and private business is not one of those. We prefer they admit that. There are lots of interests in, in this arena for folks that, that can be involved in operating that. And sometimes it just needs a public dollar jumpstart, but that would be worn by the local community unless, unless it were something through the increment. But then it would be, the business itself would pay that cost. Did I answer that question? I talked.
No, I think that's good.
We have a lot of stuff. It's not very interesting, so I'm not gonna talk about most of these things. We can sponsor a foreign trade zone. We thought initially that everybody would love that and it just hasn't happened. With the Trump tariffs, it may become more interesting. It is something we can do, but it's kind of on the business side, whether it's worthwhile to them or not. And there's some hoops to jump that haven't been very interesting. Customs has been very amenable to considering anything that we may want. We'll see. But mostly the project area, a little bit of the infrastructure bank has been our most valuable tool. Okay, next slide. We do not have these things. The Port Authority cannot come in and take over. We have no land use authority whatsoever. So the same process that a business would have to go through today to, to build and to operate is the same process that they would have to go through, through, if you have a port project area. Same for many, same if they wanted to rezone or conditionally use. That's gonna go through your planning commission into your city council. Questions here? And can I tell you, we love this. There was last legislative session, a bill that kind of popped up in the eleventh hour, an entity that would go over the top with some land use authority over the top of local communities. We think that's a huge mistake because it creates a situation where the state entity can kind of do things that have been a part of the local community.
We found so too.
Okay, good. We are so alive. We, we, we really love this. And, and we found that it's forged partnerships in the communities that we work with and instead of the state imposing what we want. We can't get ahead of it. Questions here? Okay, next slide? Oh, and I'm done. Anything I left out?
When we start?
I, I have a question. So in the rural areas, you've, you've been in like, I know it's Carbon.
We have, we have back this slide.
How long have you been in that area?
So the first, oh, I'm gonna go in order. I'm gonna try to do all the project areas. I'm gonna tell you when I'm off. So Lake Forest Park was first. We then created in Iron County, Spanish Fork, Agro Park in Juve County, Box Elder County, Mineral Mountains down in Beaver County. Oh, here's where I'm gonna get fuzzy. Twenty Wells and Twelve Valley, then West Weaver, then Castle Country, Carbon, Emery, Skyline Corridor, all over the place. Oh, Star Cadwell, thank you. Skyline Corridor and then our most recent, Port Express in West Weaver County.
Ancient Sky, Sky.
Oh, it's Sky and San Juan. I love those guys. So we, we've had a pretty good mix throughout. That, that happened essentially from April twenty-three until last month that that creation has been going on. It was a really heavy lift in twenty-three. We were, we were tasked with creating six new project areas and then our boards had stopped it already. We only have three per year. So we achieved it. And Skyline Corridor is six communities and it's fantastic and we love it. So we, we feel like we've had a good balance the whole time between rural and urban. And we have the euphemism that if you've seen one project area, you've seen one project area. They're all different. There's some similarities, but different industries that they want us to recruit, different strategies that they want employed. Some want to be very linear. We want to build our infrastructure first before we recruit. Some very aggressive on the recruitment, open to almost anything that they want us to chase. And that's great. We, we don't come in with any preconceived notion about what we think should be here. We recognize that communities have different kind of preferences for, for what businesses they think might work. And we're, we're super comfortable with that. And we find rural Utah competes really. And we find rural Utah competes really well in most arenas unless there's a workforce size component. So, if they want three thousand employees, Roosevelt's probably not a spot for you. But if they want fifty or seventy-five or a hundred, yeah, we'll split it for them.
And, and part of my question, I guess, on that is, I was just curious, because you said we don't necessarily have to invest right at the beginning to, to do this, but I assume there's some population growth in those areas. Have you kept track of any of that or aware of what those look like?
We're, we're early enough in the process that it's hard to join a kind of...
That's what I thought. I just was curious if you happen to know. And obviously, coming out here, would you be also trying to work with Vernal or Unibid? So, it'd be kind of a UNTA basin?
It's what we're thinking.
Okay.
And one thing on the project areas, so, Skyline Corridor covers several communities in Sampeatsever and Wayne Counties. You've got Castle Country that's in a couple of different, but just because they're under that umbrella, we can't move money between those entities without their consent. So, if you sign an inter, interlocal agreement with Duchene County to do some joint ventures, great. But unless you both agree to that, it, it can't happen. Roosevelt's money has to stay within Roosevelt.
Thank you.
I don't think you've asked any other questions.
Mayor, the next step would be again passing the resolution. We're, we're happy to be here when, when that's considered.
If, if we could, and I don't know what your timeframe is, but I would like to get the map that we've drawn. It shows the RDA area. Have you taken a look at that? Make sure everybody feels comfortable. We can bring that to council just to make sure, along with the resolution, and then we can really get started, I think, so...
We, we generally ask the RDA to be dissolved for a rate that's the same dollars twice, but...
Interesting.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish, let me finish. This is the best part. There are communities like Brigham City who like the ability to transact real estate through the RDA rather than through the city process. So, as long as we're not pledging the same dollar twice tax increment, it's just fine.
Let's work that out and make sure, because if there's a benefit to keep the RDA where we've already established it, then...
This is the one from our RDA, we're coming for.
Well, okay. Because I was going to say the, the original map.
Yeah, I was saying if we're going to do this, we're to go to the original.
There to...
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go.
That's the one that just drew today, Mayor.
Okay.
It's a possibility.
Because I was thinking Maverick to Maverick, basically.
My only request would be we'd love a greenfield plot or two or three.
And we'll work on that. We do have some property near the...
Airport.
More industrial property and things like that.
There you go. Only if we're private, it doesn't matter to us.
Well, you guys, I mean, you guys have done this. So, let's, let's get our map out, let's get together. We won't finalize anything, but yeah, all the input we can get, and then let's do it, let's create it.
If you guys pass just a generic resolution inviting us in, then we can mix and match. You don't have to identify those parcels when we do the resolution.
We would prefer you don't. Let me tell you why. Inevitably, artists are going to come up and you're going to immigration, where they say, oh, I really believe it. Because the project area does not have to be meticulous. In fact, I don't think we, we have them are anymore. So, you can pick a parcel here, and a parcel here, and a parcel here, and that's just fine. Perfect. It's also crazy to amend. You don't have to get it right. More than half of our project areas have already gone through at least one round of amendment, where they come in and say, actually, we want to show over here as well, we want to show over here as well, and that's great as well.
Okay. So, we're going to start a point. We want to come there.
Mayor, thank you, thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for coming. It was probably a short trip for y'all. It's shorter coming this way than it is...
Jen and I have to walk over to the next.
Thanks again. Planning, zoning, and APR compensation, Drew? What's that?
We're going before that. We made a revitalization.
Oh!
Yes, go ahead, Drew.
I saw the revitalization, and I was thinking, we're done with that, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just want to present to you, we had a wonderful conversation with one of our local businesses that, that they are interested in our facade grant matching program that we don't have in place, but we discussed in great detail. And so, what I'm looking for tonight is not formal action from council, rather direction of how you'd like me to proceed. As Mayor mentioned before, we have kind of earmarked approximately eight hundred thousand dollars to boards this downtown development project. So, right now, with current interest from local businesses, I am ready to the point where I can bring the proposal to council with the basic framework that they could be molded on how we want to do a facade matching grant program. My process is based on Vernal Cities and Casper Cities and kind of best practices between the two. So, the framework is ready to bring to council, but my question before council tonight is, would you rather me wait for the inland port to get going, which delays some of this process, or since we have immediate interest right away to start the program and just cap it? For example, we say, said the, if we said we'd only do, say, five program, or five grants per year right now. Now, if we did something like that, council, absolutely, if you saw that it was beneficial, it was working, you could increase that amount. The downside of that, if we did just a facade matching grant program, it's grant money, it's gone. If we want to set up a revolving loan program, we can do that as well. It just takes a little bit longer to set that in place. So, I guess what I'm looking for tonight is direction from council, would you like me to bring the facade matching grant program next council meeting for potential approval or so we can work on it? Or do we want to look at different, waiting for the inland ports, doing a grant, a revolving loan program with it? Kind of just direction from council, what are your thoughts on that?
My question is, how, how long would, working with inland port authority to set that up, how long do we anticipate that to be?
So, when we spoke with them, it was a rather quick process. They get going right away. The resolution is the, the key there. And as they mentioned, they sent you and I multiple sample resolutions. I haven't sent them to grant yet, so I want councils go ahead with that before we get that. But that's a very quick process, and they jumped in and get going right away. Receiving money on that end is going to be a longer process because it is the incremental increase through the taxes. So, before we see that money coming back in, it could be a little while.
Well, maybe we ought to back up just really quickly, because with the group that was this here, just here, do we want to go ahead and move forward with that group? And I think I would like to have a motion from the council to officially move forward with that group, and then we can bring the resolution back, just so that, if that makes sense.
Do we need a motion to go forward? I think we've already said we want to. We need to see the paperwork and...
Well, no, I mean just moving forward with...
Just bring them into the...
Yeah, to bring, to explore and bring the resolution.
I would move we explore if we need a motion, the, the, working with the inland port authority. I, I have no problem with that. I just, obviously...
Just for clarity, yeah.
I, I wouldn't approve anything till we saw, you know, grant heads to look at stuff and that kind of stuff, so...
And I think the biggest thing is we were working in different direction, and so I think it'd be good just to have a motion to, you know...
That's fine, I, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Me imposed, okay. And then on this one, I do have another comment, too. So, originally, we had, what Josh is talking about is we had the eight hundred thousand, we were thinking four hundred thousand in loan, four hundred thousand in grant, and that's how we're going to set it up. The revolving loan would repay itself with interest. The grant would be repaid through the TIF, which is tax incremental financing, which is what the Port Authority is going to bring to the table. My opinion is I, I would feel okay moving forward with the grant portion, as long as it was, you know, as long as we knew what the threshold would be. And Josh had mentioned, you know, maybe ten thousand dollars per project or something. And so, that would mean if we did five, that would mean fifty thousand dollars a year, which is not a ton, and we would still have, I mean, that would get us through, what, eight years or something like that, or that range. But, so I don't see any problem with that, as long as the parameters are set, and those are proposed to council in the next one. I, I don't see any major harm in doing that, especially if we get the inland port authority moving, because as soon as those businesses, tax, well, value increases, that's where that twenty-five seventy-five is going to come from, and that's going to start to repay. So, I don't see that there's a big reason to wait, other than I don't want to spend all of it on just a few projects. I think, I think council should consider the amounts that we are willing to spend on each project and those kinds of things.
And you recommend five a year, Mayor?
Five project?
Yeah.
You know, if that's what, if that's what Josh recommends, I would entertain that. It just depends on the amount per project as well.
And with that money, do they come with a proposal, and we approve the proposal, and it's kind of going...
Does council approve that, or do you...
Council. Council will be the review board. In, in the proposal has criteria of what can be done, what's allowed, what isn't. Council would be the decision makers. So, they would go through the process of application through, that was Drew and myself, but council would be the decision makers.
And one of...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
One of the things that we were trying to do is to set up parameters of what, how you qualify for that money. But that is kind of cumbersome, and, and that, that's going to take some time as well. So, for now, as long as the projects come before the council, and council can see and agree that that is something that...
But it might be good for us and for them to have some basic guidelines that we, so we know it's meeting where, like, if we just have a general direction of, I don't know, color scheme, or, yeah.
And that was the idea original, so that might be something that the council wants to enter, considering between now and the next meeting. And if we need to take a little longer, great. But that was kind of one of the biggest hangups is, what do we want our Main Street to look like? And if, if we're, we don't have to make everybody fit within that, other than if they come and ask us for match funding, they, then it's easy for us to say, well, you can have it if you meet these specifications.
Right.
So, I think we need to identify at least some foundational ones.
Well, my... Go ahead, Josh.
In my proposal, I have any suggestions for types of signs that are generally approved, types of signs that are not approved. And again, it does come down to council's ultimate decision, because you can create, you know, variations to that, but it does have guidelines for individuals. So, they know they can't bring a signed proposal that they want to get on the facade of their building that's inappropriate in nature. There are guidelines on the council to establish ahead of time. So, who do we have assigned to city beautification? Councilman Goodrich?
I think it's kind of fell under the interfaith council, so me and Dawn.
So, I would say in between now and the next one, maybe let's have a meeting where we get together and just review what you have as far as the signs and, and the exterior, you know, whatever requirements we're going to have there, and just at least pre-approve those. The ultimate idea was also to go to Roosevelt Business RDA, because there's a lot of Main Street businesses in there and get their opinion. And I still think we probably should do that once the next RDA meeting. They have one this month.
Yeah, September or something. I have one like...
So, maybe we can get this approved, the foundational pieces, but then I would really like to include the RDA for a little more input to finalize some of those plans or parameters that we've done in place. And so, any other, anything else?
Do you need a motion, or just go forward?
A motion is great, but really general direction is all I'm looking for, since I didn't bring everything back. But I will get hold of Councilman Goodrich. You got it in there, and that will have that framework started and prepared for council.
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next item, planning, zoning, and APR compensation discussion.
I'm going to take this one as well. Drew is here as well.
Out them out on all of these, or what? I'm just going to cross your name out, then.
Drew, so tonight we are proposing, now, with this, there's a couple options. Brock is here as well to talk on parameters and payroll. But we are recommending that we change planning and zoning's compensation from twenty-five dollars a meeting to fifty dollars a meeting. They are extremely underpaid in comparison to other cities. They aren't a statutorily required committee that we have, so the participation is invaluable to the, to the city. And so, we would like to handle these two separately. So, the first recommendation to council is that we change it to fifty dollars per meeting for planning and zoning, and that we also change it to a ten ninety-nine, instead of having them as employees to operate through payroll. Also, if council is in agreement to that, that we backdate it to the start of August, because we do have one new planning and zoning member, who's actually attendance tonight, who has attended a meeting, or is, and has not done payroll for those commissioners yet. So, it'd be really nice if they could just start in August and do all of those at ten ninety-nine, so this new commissioner doesn't have to come in and do all the paperwork and then redo another ten ninety-nine. Brock, is there anything I missed up?
I have questions about why we want to do that.
Does anyone have questions of why we want to work the ten ninety-nine?
No.
Curious? No questions moving forward.
If you're curious, we've got lunch.
Yeah.
I would say let's go ahead, and I, I will make a motion to prove Josh's recommendation to up the pay to fifty, to back pay for August, and what was the other part of that?
Just to change it to ten ninety-nine, starting of August.
Starting of August, ten ninety-nine. I think all those are good suggestions, so...
And the back pay?
And the back pay to August. Yeah, I'd move we go with all three of those recommendations.
Just to clarify, it wouldn't be really back pay, they just haven't been paid for August, so...
Right, right, just to start August, yeah.
Start that off.
And we already approved the money for it, so it's just a matter of paying it, so...
Do we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second? Okay, Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
And you imposed? Or still curious?
Let me keep looking.
Next item for council discussion is we did have, it was brought up for an APR to pay those individuals on that committee. We do have some concerns, and we'd like to talk with council about that. That's our request separately. Our deputy reporter has contacted many different cities within the state to ask how they handle their committees such as APR, the committees that are not statutorily required. She has been unable to contact one city that pays that are under committees. They are all volunteer, and so, for council's consideration, should council want to pay, that's absolutely imperative. We do want to denote, or note that this could cause a ripple effect with all of our committees within the city, airport board, golf committee, who wants to come back, we can address that tonight, well, I should say, well, just a future, interfaith council. So, there are a lot of those different other committees that we would need to address if we are going to pay one committee. We do not want to downpay nor discredit APR committee. They are phenomenal, they are doing incredible work. We love those committee members. We've had some discussions about working with individuals specifically that head up large events. For example, Vernal City, they actually pay an individual to leave their bowling festival. They have a ten ninety-nine for specific events, some events they do not, such as holidays. So, it is different there. We've had some internal discussions as far as paying the committee members for showing up to those meetings. Staff recommendation is that we, we table that or do not do that at this point until we can find some other committees. But as staff, we're absolutely willing to do how council likes to approach with that, or answer any questions that we have tabled.
Did we talk about this in a previous meeting and approve it?
We didn't, but we approved it.
We proved up some budget money set aside for it. We didn't approve the amounts or anything. We just said, let's put this much aside in the budget, right, Zeke?
Seven, five hundred.
Right, just, and that's to pay the both, we thought possibly.
APR, yeah.
Oh, just for APR. We had another separate for the planning and zoning. I missed that, I guess, I forgot, sorry.
I like the idea of, I mean, just like for the meetings, there's good participation, and, you know, it's good to, to bring people to the table and, and do that, and if they're willing to do that for free, that's great. But I think any work that's done, like, significant amounts of work should be paid, like, and any work that's done, like significant amounts of work should be paid, like, and maybe there's just.
Like the Autumn Fest is a pretty big deal to get that off the ground.
I think maybe we have a process by the board to approve pay, you know, um, maybe.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to track it and stuff, but some of those projects that they do are pretty big.
I liked, I liked that idea that you suggested that some cities pay, or maybe you, maybe you were talking about.
One thing that might help, uh, at least with the meetings, and it's a little bit harder, because the interfaith council, we have decent participation.
Mm-hmm, and I don't think anyone there is looking to get compensated for that.
But we do have lunch, we do provide something for them.
That's true.
And so I'm wondering if we do keep the budget in for the APR for now, then we do, you know, maybe it's pizza or something like that.
I was looking online, just doing other research, and I I think it was bound to Full City, maybe, that they both their APR, I think I took a screenshot of it, so I can send it to you, but it was both their APR and their planning and zoning got a some kind of a stipend plus a pass to their to their aquatic center, whatever.
And maybe it's.
I'll send you those that I found. Right, this one had both, I'll send you what I found, like I remember taking a screenshot of it, but.
That that's a good thought, because maybe it's just a, you know, maybe it's a cool pass or something like that, but.
Yeah, Mayor, it sounds like we need maybe a little more time on this one to think about it, so I would move we table um, and think about it, do a little more research, and then uh, let's plan for the next council meeting to discuss it, if we can make sure it gets on the agenda, that would be my motion.
And we have a motion to table till the next, well, not indefinitely, but at least till the next council meeting, do we have a second? And we will have an APR meeting this Thursday.
This Thursday, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Would you like me to bring back a proposal as well for paying, say, the chairman of those larger committees structured based off of our family community cities?
Yeah.
Just so we can see that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is I just think we need a little more information before we make a decision.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
They have struggled a lot, the APR committee, to have enough of their people there to have a quorum. Like several times that I've gone.
Yeah.
They can't make any decisions because they don't have enough people there, and so and some of them are pretty steady to be there, but I did notice on their minutes for this time that Charles Hamilton's stepping away from that, and he's been pretty steady to come to, so.
We did appoint two more.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that works out, but yeah, you're absolutely right, and one other thing that for them to remember is it's just a, it's just a quorum of whoever is currently appointed, and so we do have some vacancies and those don't count.
Yeah, and and they're good to know, know that, but they're still sometimes struggled to have.
Uh, Councilwoman Goodrich, could you, are you planning to go this week? If you can maybe talk to them too a little bit, just. Cause uh, cause I kind of like the idea of the city perk uh as a possibility.
And I think I'll be able to make it to that one too.
I I won't be able to, I'll be out of town, I'll be in Virgil, but anyway.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we need to restate the motion, you've got that? Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, APR structure approval.
Yep. Mayor, council problem again. Tonight, I'd like to discuss and propose and ask for approval to purchase four new benches, um, surface mount benches, and also a shake structure on the pickleball courts. The location, and I've been working with APR on this, especially Jeremy Liberton, uh, he's done a lot of work on this, and they would like to install these items in the center of the pickleball courts where you enter into the the pickleball. Um, the benches, they would actually install a surface mount onto this event, and then the uh shake structure would actually go over each of the benches to provide shade for them. Um, and they have done a lot of fundraisers recently. They've had tournaments, they've done sponsors, they've done donations, so uh, this would all cost, the cover, the cost for this would cover through their fundraisers. Uh, but the total cost would be ten thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty cents to do this. Um, but like I said, Jeremy's been working really hard on this, and it's all donations and fundraisers that would pay for this. And I've been talking with Zeke and making sure that the funds are there, and they are there. But we just want to get your approval, your comments, concerns, uh, installing these benches and shake structures at the pickleball courts.
Again, I have one question. I know in the, in the resolution that was created, that a subcommittee could expend that kind of money if it as long as they have some type of documentation that their subcommittee approves it. I mean, I would be okay with it, and the council has to decide, but I just think it would be nice to have that. I think it's written in there that they have to make sure that subcommittee would approve that money. Doesn't have to be the whole committee, because it's not coming out of the total funds, but if you can just have him, uh, some type of uh verification that the members of his subcommittee all agree.
I'll ask you for sure, maybe this is how it already been done, I'll, I'll verify for sure.
And so maybe the motion, if the council decides to move forward with this, is just contention on the subcommittee, um, voting for it as well.
Would Zeke, would we have to reopen the budget for this?
No, they currently have, it's the rec, right?
Yeah.
Their rec, they currently have nineteen thousand eight hundred in there, so.
And that's the subcommittee?
The rec subcommittee.
Yeah, perfect. I think it's awesome to see what they're doing.
What falls under rec and what falls under park sometimes there, because I can see this going either one.
That's a good question, um, does anybody know more of the details?
I would honestly, so the parks, uh, subcommittee, it's like parks and sports, so.
Yeah.
And it could, uh, but isn't that what? We'll have to see what subcommittee, in my mind, it doesn't really matter, whatever project is presented by that subcommittee, that subcommittee would have to approve, so.
I think the only issue would be funding and where they've.
They've come up with the money.
With their own money.
Yeah.
You wouldn't want the other part of the committee to try to take that money anyway.
Right, right.
I think it was a line I just for them, for their fundraising efforts.
Arts, park and rec is a committee, and then there's an art subcommittee, a park subcommittee, and a rec subcommittee, but I'm just not sure.
The rec usually focuses on trails and and other things, and parks, and sporting activities and things, and so there's some guidelines on which each of them, like the nature park would fit, fit under the recs, the trail system would fit under the recs, the teddy's playground fits under the rec.
Okay.
Where, you know, you're non-conventional.
Rec would be more like, if there's like softball or
Yeah.
those kinds of things happening too, but.
Right.
This, so, this one is rec, you think?
Yeah, that's how I understand it, so.
I'd move that we approve this depending on the.
Contention on the subcommittee approving.
Yep.
Would you like me to report it back, do you know, or just verify with Jeremy and move forward?
Verify with Jeremy.
Yeah, I think you just move forward after.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, page bench waterline, page engineering, commissioner, banker.
By the way, waterline is spelled incorrectly, Ciara.
Was that me?
That was.
What?
Marta, or Marta.
In math, not English.
I hear you.
You know, I'll actually say, I learned my lesson, when you fill out the填表 form PDF, or type it in word first, because I had this all filled out to send to you, and I'm like, it was gone. And I'm like, it was on a crunch to get it to you anytime, anyway. That's probably my excuse, but I'm also an engineer, so that's uh, that's the reality, so, um, I think uh, there's some questions earlier from, um, the council, and just so just to clarify, this is, what's being, what I'm proposing to do is just uh, an amendment to our fee, the engineering fee. Last meeting, the council approved the bid for Terry Grotherson excavation to do the waterline install. And then it's probably been a month before that, the council approved the um, contract for Herbert Construction to do the, the tank rehabilitation. So, um, I, there's a lot in this, and you probably read through it, and I probably provided way too much information, but this project started a long time ago, um, in twenty twenty-two, so I said, when we got the funding, and um I think between us and working with Ryan and Kirby and everybody else, obviously, there's just been a lot of hoops to jump through with where to put the waterline, and we met with probably every property owner out there, um, on different things like that, and so uh, we have just, some of it is we went ahead and did work that was outside of our scope to kind of get the project to keep it moving along without me getting an amendment. And then some of it's just that we, there was some rework on things as we went, as well, just a lot of it to do with property owner coordination and kind of going back and forth on a few of those kinds of things, so. Um, any questions on that? I mean, I go into details of.
Can we have that?
Same numbers to you.
It's on the next page, Ryan.
Can you, can you bring that up? There we go. So obviously, the fees are increasing, do you have what it was and what it's going to, and then Ryan, Kirby's not here, but.
Sorry to hear you answer questions.
So, any questions on our concerns?
So, I just, I just know they didn't kind of drag on, so I know that's the kind of thing.
And is this still fit within the, the overall cost of the project, as far as this is, we're not gonna have to increase funding in that budget item?
I can answer all those, so I'm sorry, what was your first question? Um, so our original proposed, total proposed fee was um, one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred. That includes design, environmental permitting, survey, construction management, like that's the whole thing, right? Of that, fifty-five thousand seven hundred was the design fee. Um, so that was kind of our original, we added a small fee under one amendment that the council approved to do the um, tank um, structural assessment, and then help um, with a few things on that. And so basically then all what's being asked for is sixty-three thousand dollars, that, so that will include the additional work that's been done as well as like since twenty twenty-two, um, our rates, our hourly billable makes an increase. So, does that kind of answer that part of the question? And then the second part of the question was, so the total funding package was two point nine five million essentially, with two hundred, two point eight four being grant or loan with principal forgiveness. The city's contribution is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Even with this increase and the co, the, the contracts that have been awarded, there's still almost four hundred thousand dollars in contingency.
So I wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah.
And you guys feel, I mean, it seems reasonable, you guys feel good about it, any questions from the council on that? Same then, we're inter.
Kirby did want me to mention he is a parent.
Okay.
He reviews it.
Thank you. Um, same no discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion? You have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, all right, Goodrich, bad discussion, Ryan, you want me to, yeah, go ahead.
Either or.
Yeah, jump up here.
All right, I need to stretch out anyway. Can you drive that a little bit? No. No, what we're after uh, right now is a little bit of direction from the council on the gun range. Yes, I'll say it, we're ready to spend some money, so, I think, hopefully.
One way or the other.
Yeah, the EA study actually came back and the thirty day, everything went good on that, we got an email just yesterday, was that? So very positive.
So we're, we're cautiously confident?
Yes, yep.
We'll know more on Thursday.
Yeah, we will. So what we need to do is, is decide on how are we gonna go about building this and and getting bids? Do you want, and we're good either way. Do we wanna bid the whole thing out as a big package deal and have one contractor do it, or do you want us to kind of control the bids and go out, I believe we'll save money by doing that. If we do separate bids, say the earthwork and then the shelters and the restrooms and um, and stuff like that, so the question tonight is what approach do you wanna do to move forward on getting bids for the gun range?
And and I'll, I'll kind of toss a few things out there too, so the grant, um, grant's around a million dollars, I I believe, and then we have approximately five hundred thousand saved up, uh, city funds, and then WCF says they have money, we can't necessarily count on that. So the idea is worst case scenario, well, we don't want to delay the project any longer, no matter what, because we're at the end of it, we're either gonna get the money or not. So a feeling that I had is, let's split it up into dirt work and do certain things, so that no matter if the money comes, we have, we know we have five hundred thousand dollars, and we can dedicate maybe to the thousand yard range and the dirt work on the um, cowboy action or whatever may be. So if we split that up, then if we don't get the, the grant, then we still have it chopped up to where we can take pieces of it and move forward and get going ASAP. Whereas if we build out in a lump sum, if we don't get the million, then we have to go back and break it out anyway, so that's just kind of a thought that I have.
Yeah, I agree with that, plus I think, Mayor, you mentioned before, unlike the cowboy action, maybe having different entities give an opportunity, if they wanna sponsor a, you know, a piece of it, like a shop or something with Stratum and Lake, or whoever, it doesn't matter, whoever wants to do it. Um, I think bidding it out, like you said, in parts, in parts will help us, uh, you know, regardless of the outcome. Uh, cause we can then move forward what we can afford and go from there.
And I've spoken with Jones and Mail, and they've already, we're already getting it kind of sectioned out, updated from the last time that we had a lot of bids, so where the two hundred yard range is done and the road, the engine skating stuff, so.
Yeah, the two hundred yard range is beautiful, isn't it?
Oh, it's awesome.
And it's fun to shoot, no?
So if we um, parse it out and like, basically, the city would do the bidding and all that, would we have to bring those bids back to council each time?
Yeah, we would.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll bring the proposal back too on how we wanna grow Cal, while you, you are in the committee.
Okay, yeah, I think if we could save money, that's a good way to go.
It might be good to talk about which parcels we want to tackle next, I mean, I, in my mind, the thousand yard range is next, but maybe it's something else, I don't know, I just maybe if we get a little direction on that as well, but.
What's, I would say you know, work to the more, start with the easiest or least expensive and work way up as you can, maybe, I don't know.
Couldn't we just do the dirt work for all the ranges all at once, or is that, is that?
That might be a.
Another way to change. To do it all at once is you're.
Yeah.
On a VA app or whatever out there.
So let's look at that, breaking it up into dirt work between the thousand and the cowboy action, because up on top of the hill, we're not, it's not gonna take a lot of dirt work. Those two areas are gonna be significantly more than anywhere else.
And archery too.
Yeah, so maybe we, maybe we get a bid on the dirt work first, and then, and then a separate bid on, you know, the structures and the benches, and then another bid on, and and I think we, we do, you know, Don mentioned it, the um I'm thinking sponsorship, but is that the correct uh, donation sponsorships for the facades on the cowboy action? We can work, start working on that too, and signing those up, because I think there's several businesses that are ready to go with that and set the price on that, so I think we're ready to, to move, I mean, just if you're around running, if we can.
Just my, it wasn't my idea, I just heard Mayor mention about the facades and businesses, so it's his idea, I just wanted to bring it up, because anyway, but I do agree, I think the dirt work, because it's kind of all the same in the same area, probably good to do that as one, and then the other stuff.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, um, just as discussion, I guess the motion, just to have Brian move forward with starting to bid that out regardless of.
I'll, I'll bring back, I think I can bring back the the detailed album plans and everything, that way you're aware of what's.
Yeah.
And I think you guys can make a motion on that, so.
I'd be great.
I gotta be a pro.
I think where we, and you're probably planning this already, but um, with the dirt work, because it's such a big job, I think, you know, two or three, four bids would be great, if you could.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The other thing we're gonna run into, I know for a fact, is, I've already talked to Kevin about it, and he's he's wanting to utilize as many of the companies that has helped donate in the past. Not to give them a, you know, a freebie, but they're gonna also give I'm sure they're gonna wanna donate a little bit here and there as well, so. Um, maybe a little gratitude in that, and I know Grant, we, we brought that up before with giving work to people without having to report it, especially if they're donating a lot, and so that's gonna be a little bit of a I don't know, just, just a situation we'll have to work through. But there will be people wanting to donate, so I guess if they donate, maybe seven or three bids.
Well, if they donate, it probably will come under bid anyways.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Do you need that contract discussion? Chief.
Just a follow-up discussion, we talked about last council meeting, if we attack, you've got response, we need to attack this. Look the person direction.
Didn't sound like you approved what we recommended at our, it was actually that last meeting, the week, meeting before when we made the recommendation and you took that to them and it didn't sound like they went with it, so.
Do we want to, I guess the question is, is do we want to negotiate any further? Do we want to hold firm to that?
Did they counteroffer at all?
They didn't.
The other thing we received is that email. What is that?
The email stated that the way I took it was that they don't really have a good mechanism to do an escalation clause.
Uh, I personally, I disagree with that, understanding some of the education funding personally. I mean, I I'm probably wrong, but just my own experience. I think there is potential there. So I, like I said, I, that concerns me because I think, you know.
Should we go into close session for this negotiation? But it's a contract, so I don't know if we can.
I wouldn't.
Okay.
I can look at stats here real quick if you're wanting to.
No, I'm not wanting to.
I think we're okay. I just, I I guess the concern I have is there's a cost to us. And if we don't get some escalation, then the cost, it's going to be a bigger cost as we keep going down the road. And and we're going to be absorbing that and and covering that more and more. And and at some point, you know, I I think we have to to cover ourselves and protect the citizens. It's not like if there was a call down there, police would show up at UBTAC and help out. They would take care of things. And it sounded like the last sentence that they said something about if they needed, if if they needed to go a different direction with security to let them know or something or whatever. So I I think they're probably preparing for contingency as well if we do the, you know, execute the ninety day termination. So my feeling personally is, is I, I mean, thinking of Roosevelt City, and I know they're in Roosevelt City. Well, technically, they're in Younta County, right? So they're all in Younta, well, very, the welding part's in Roosevelt, but majority of it's in Younta County. I would, I would think we would execute the ninety day because I think we'd have to have some increase to to support them. My thoughts.
Is that, I can't remember the contract. We were like, was it three year or five year? Like, we could just do a year, being an increase that each year.
That's what, that's a thought that I had as well, or even if it was two or three max, then.
Because each year we're getting that increase to our employees, so we could shrink the the contract down so that each time we renew it, we we bump it.
It's a good thought.
I just don't know if they're amicable to that.
Well, and I think what we, if we want to draw the hard line now, then we can do that. A thought that I have is very similar to Councilman Goodrich's, and that is we don't budge on the overall price that we presented. We did some figures today. So you got, I guess the council has kind of just added three percent since two thousand nineteen till now to see where that would end up. That was a hundred and eight. We did some, we did some numbers today and I'm looking more at actual costs from two thousand nineteen to now. And it was around a hundred and ten to a hundred and twelve thousand. So we're right there. Our increase that we're, we paid our officers since two thousand nineteen till now is, you know, depends on the officer, but minimum twenty percent. And if you look at twenty percent increase on ninety thousand, it's a hundred and twelve thousand, basically. So I would just say, whatever we do, I would say a hundred and eight thousand is very reasonable and and we can go to UBTAC and let them know this is what our costs have increased to and this is why it's justified. It's very easy. It's very fair. If we forego the escalation clause and do a short contract and that's the direction we want to go, I think that's also a fair way to approach it. And and I do agree with you, Don, but I I feel like, this is why I want to go in close session, but I'll just say it. Aaron was a council member and I don't think there's one contract that I saw him ever negotiate that there wasn't an escalation clause in. So he's very familiar with the concept and I just think it's a strategy that they're using to keep their costs down.
The original version of this one had it as well and somehow it was taken out.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'll I'll do whatever the council wants to. I'm just saying, I think, based on his comments, it didn't sound like he was willing to budge much. And based on our situation, I think we need to hold firm on the escalation, at least get that cost. If we want to offer him a year and do the hundred and eight and and go forward, you know, I'm just looking at it as as a, I think we might be better off not worrying about it.
For budgeting purposes, we could just go a hundred and twelve and then you'd know it's just a hundred and twelve for the next three years.
Or that's what I was going to say. Or we average out what it would be for the, I can't remember, five years or whatever. And so the cost goes up so that it's a little higher than what we need now, but it ends where we, I don't know.
I personally wouldn't go over a three-year contract.
Yeah, I I wouldn't.
So.
Even if we had the escalation clause, I don't, I don't know. Maybe we could, but what are your thoughts on?
Chief likes longer. So we actually had four in the proposal. We have, it's been a fairly common number that we use in contracts. For my position, I have no preference. I don't have Josh's.
For me, the escalation isn't a problem is there's a ninety day termination clause. If they're budgeting purposes and they run into a problem, they could execute the ninety day termination clause. So I don't, I don't see no problem with that. They can build it into their budget, but.
Yeah, but again, his comment was they they couldn't, and I disagree with that. I I mean, just knowing things over there, and I don't know a lot. I just hear from other people, et cetera. But being aware of a few things, I just think they can handle it. So to me, if you want to do a four year and figure out what the average and say it'll be a hundred and twelve per year, that's your set amount. So he can budget for it instead of worrying about escalation. I'm fine with that. But I I honestly, I don't see that he would, he he'll take it based on what he said, where he just couldn't afford to do that. So.
So he does say in the letter that in good faith, he's, they're interested in working and discussing the draft further to reach mutable, mutual agreeable extension. But then he talks about the challenge for the cost structure and how it lacks mechanism. But it seems like maybe we should at least tell him, you know.
Go back with our costs and.
Go back with our costs and explain it. And if he's still unwilling, then I would think that we'd want, you know, do the ninety day clause. But we should probably give him a chance to discuss it with us first. I don't know. Maybe that's where we're already headed.
What, wasn't there something to do with the termination having to be mutually agreed upon? Or one side couldn't just say, we want it out of this? Was that addressed?
In their proposal, they wanted that.
Yeah, we said no ways.
And and rightfully so. That's not something we ever want to agree to. We don't know our circumstances. Things could change. So I guess the the biggest thing is what are we, we've heard from Don, I've got the idea where Councilman Goodrich is. Do we want to kind of get some, something in the middle there? Do we want to just draw the hard line? To me, it makes no difference. I just.
I'm okay with either. Well, I like the one twelve set with no escalation for four years. That works for me. Or the.
That's easy to justify.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to do it, the only, I I would support that if we can get an answer or response by next council. Because I think we need to get this out of the way and taken care of. Because if we do need to execute the ninety eight because they're not willing to work, I want to get that going. So they, so we know where we're at and they know where they're going to be at, so we can plan and that gives them time.
You can do it at the same time, too. We can do a cover letter that says, here's our final offer and attach, amend it or the same contract, whatever you guys decide to do, and then tell them if they don't accept it. We can either say by a certain date that the ninety days notice is effective, or we can go ahead and give it, give it in the letter. Say you've got our ninety day notice, but if you return the signed agreement, that will present that.
I like the, given them a certain amount of time. Say, if you respond by this date or don't respond by this date, then that's one of the ninety days. How long, well, it's four years starting from the start. What it is started.
Started today.
So we kind of pass that point up.
Like I said, that's the only thing I would say is we set a date, they they respond yea or nay, and then we can get the ninety day. If we can do it that way as part of the letter, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we can start that process if needed. If they're willing to go with it and they are good for that as well.
And the letter, are you thinking right up what you've talked about, that what our costs are, kind of the thing? So, yeah.
And we can get much better data, but we did, we went off a couple of officers this afternoon, just looking at what we paid a particular officer in two thousand nineteen, what we're paying now. And we did that for two different officers. One officer was twenty percent increase, one officer was forty percent increase, but they had promotions in there. And so we'll look at some other officers that are basically patrol officers and see how much data we can get. If we have, if you know of a patrol officer that's been a patrol officer for five years and not been promoted, can you give us some of that information, too?
I can get that. I can get that information. I haven't gone for a few days and I.
We just need the name.
Information that Mr. Vic or.
Yeah. All we need is names and we can get the data on transparency that you thought I could on the summer. And then we'll, we'll get all that data so that it's very clear that there's no, it's not that we're just asking for more. It's easy to show that our costs to the city doesn't have increased this, and so this is what we expect.
Right, right. I think that's good.
Is, is, Mayor, let me just ask, is two weeks enough or do we need to wait till the second meeting in September?
Board meetings and things, they do.
They do. They do. It's, I have to check. Let, I'll I'll text and check. I know who would know. I mean.
Let's just get the data there.
Aaron is on the board.
Oh.
Aaron, you are?
Sorry.
Would you please use your, you know, your position there to to kind of grease the wheels on this thing?
This is the first I've heard of it, to be honest, so.
I know, and I didn't expect the board to know, and that's.
What do you need, though? When's your next meeting?
I shouldn't have said that in public.
It is September seventeenth.
September seventeenth? So that's four weeks. Is that two?
Our, our meeting would be the day before, so they wouldn't be able to, unless, can they do an emergency meeting if they need to at the board or above?
Is, does Aaron have the ability to make that decision unilaterally without the input?
He should.
And that's what I'm wondering because.
That's why I have that brought to my attention.
So I don't know that we need to wait for the board meeting. I would just say, and he doesn't have to make a final decision. He just has to give us a indication that they are going to work on accepting that. I would, well.
I can do it either way.
I'll wait the month.
So September second is our next council meeting. You want then or the sixteenth, you think? I'm good with the second. I would prefer earlier, but I also want to make sure there's time to get stuff put together.
I can, yeah, as far as preparing the letter and making any amendments, you want the contract. I assume you're not going to have me redraft the whole.
No.
Good thing. So as long as it's simple amendments, I can have a letter ready tomorrow.
Okay.
So let's get, let's have a consensus then on what we want to go back with, whether we have the escalation or whether we go with a a set amount and average it, we'll stick with a hundred and twelve. What are the thoughts there? And then we can let Grant know and get this rolling.
I'm good with, I'd rather do the flat. I think it might be easier for him for budgeting if he knows there's a flat. And I'm okay with the hundred and twelve because that gives us an average increase. We'll make a little more at the end and a little less at the, or a little less, a little more in the beginning, a little less at the end is what I was trying to say.
And is that what you, you said a hundred and twelve is about where we're at right now?
We can double check. It's a minimum. Well, I'll just do, let me just do. So if we.
And originally, we said.
He said twenty percent. That's a hundred and.
Well, I'm saying markup because of what should have.
Right, yeah, because you're also going ahead in the future. So I'm, that's what I'm saying. I almost think a hundred and fifteen might be better, but I could do a hundred and twelve.
I'd, I'd be.
A hundred and twelve is twenty-five percent increase. And if you do cost, or if you do, based on ninety thousand and and then type multiply it by twenty-five percent. I was dividing it by twenty percent because that's a hypothetical number we want to get to. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the one twelve, I think. And and if we just make that flat, that'll help him and he'll save money probably the last year, maybe the last two years, depending upon how things go, save a little bit.
He's saving money now because a hundred and twelve thousand is what we should be charging him today.
Right.
And then it should go a three percent increase off of that number. So it is, it is more than fair to him.
And you're saying a four, four year, a hundred and twelve, and we don't want the mutual garbage in there about, both have to just approve the separation or whatever?
When we took that out of, I mean, the mutual termination provisions were not in the last one. He didn't comment.
Okay.
So unless you want to specifically address that, obviously, that's already gone.
No, just do that increase with the.
And we'd like it probably by September second because the first is a holiday, so the second before council. So if we don't have it then, then we assume they're going to go a different direction and we can start the ninety day from that day. Is that?
Chief, four years, three years, where it's set. Do you have a preference on that?
Yeah, I I was trying to steer away from a year so we didn't have to do this year after year, mildly concerned. So so two, three, four.
You don't have any thought on that?
Does he want to come back every year or?
It'd be more enticing for him to go longer with a fixed rate, just because that kind of thing where you wouldn't have to worry about it either.
And we are giving him a deal still, even though we've been, we're increasing it from what it was, so.
Should for three?
Anything else?
Had been, and we were changing before. So if we go to three, it would be consistent with what we get.
Sounds like a close. Do we have a motion?
I'll move. We go ahead and go forward with that, with the recommendation of the of the hundred and twelve, with the September second date and. Three-year term and that if they don't respond or let us know either way they don't want it, then we'll say September second, we'll start the ninety day.
Be a September second time, like by noon that day or?
By noon that day. What I'd put in my note, just because previously it was said before council, I had to put five P M. and I know.
Yeah. That's great. Fine, because if we have it before council, we can then talk about it in council. Make, we'll probably need to make sure and put it on the, on the agenda just so we can either discuss or, because we shouldn't need to make a motion now. We've already approved it. If they approved, it's just information, right? Okay, did I get everything for the motion?
I covered everything in my notes.
Okay.
Without the escalation or with?
The one twelve is the number. We're not going to look back at the origins. Stick with the one twelve, right?
I didn't hear that.
I think, are you guys okay with the one twelve?
I just want to make sure. The one twelve.
Because they were ninety, right? Weren't they ninety?
We're ninety.
So I think one twelve is a good deal for them.
Yeah, and we can look at those just to, but I think it's going to reinforce the one twelve number. And so we'll just look at it anyway. So we have that. So we have it to give to him.
Right. Okay, I made the motion. Hopefully it covered everything.
Did you get all that?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Let's really quickly move through financials.
I move, we approved the financials, I didn't see any issues or concerns.
Did everybody see those?
Yeah.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilman White, I'm a favor.
Aye.
And city manager report?
I just wanna give the council an update, we had that seismic testing, that company came out yesterday, it went really well, we had Yerba County, Vernal, Ballard, Roosevelt, all of us there kind of watching it. We're still waiting to hear back on all the road departments, but thus far, it sounds good. If they wanna do something in the city, it will come before city council, they can bring the data, they have the test results of everything they did here, so they can show that to you. I just wanna let you know, it did happen right outside of our fire station. It was really neat that they came and we were the display place for the whole, whole basin.
Awesome. Committee reports, do we have anything?
I don't have anything.
What's the next interpet council again?
The first Wednesday.
Yeah, September third.
Yeah, September third at noon.
At noon.
All right, if no answers for future discussions...
I move, we go to close session, as for the purpose list in Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second.
Do we need to adjourn when we're done?
Sure.
With the motion, do it.
Do we need to end, or do we, when we're done, with the close session? We don't need to come back in, no.
Okay, so, I'll move the, add to the motion, then we terminate the meeting after we come out of closed session.
Okay, well, we do have still seconds, my Councilman Goodrich, have you voted, no?
Aye. 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 Aye.
unanimous, do we have enough for the...